We respectfully acknowledge that the community, the municipality of Highlands East is located on the Treaty 20 Michi Seagag territory and in the traditional territory of the Michi Seagag and Shipewa Nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations. The community of the municipality of Highlands East respectfully acknowledge that the Williams Treaties First Nations are the stewards and caretakers of these lands and water in perpetuity and that they continue to maintain this responsibility to ensure their health and integrity for generations to come. Roll call.
As I call your name, please answer here. Our present councillor Mackenzie.
Person.
Councillor Lewis.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rail.
Present.
Councillor Strong.
Present.
And Mayor Burton.
I'm here. Is there any disclosure of bikini issues? An approval of the agenda.
That the agenda for the regular meeting of council of April eighth, twenty twenty five be approved as circulated.
If someone move councillor Mackenzie, second by councillor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. The minutes.
That council for the municipality of Highlands East approves the minutes of the regular council meeting of March eleventh, twenty twenty five.
If someone move councillor Lewis, second by councillor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. This morning we have Baker Tilly Municipal Auditor Richard St. Inglah. Richard.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Richard.
Okay, all right. Good. Good to be with you. Hope things are well in Highlands East and here today to present the financial results and the summary of our auditors report for the December thirty first, twenty twenty three year end, so. And then what I was planning to do was run through the presentation, so I'm not sure if you all have that, but if you do, I will run through that.
Richard, would you like me to share it to screen?
Yes, yes, if you could, that would be great. So for twenty twenty three, as I go through, I will highlight there were some interesting changes in relation to the way the public sector accounting standards board requires presentations for public organizations, so that'll be highlighted as I go through, so, but, but first off, our report on the financial statements, then in our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the municipality of Highlands East at December thirty first, twenty twenty three, and the results of its operations and its cash flows for the year then ended in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. So that is your standard clean, unqualified auditor report and it's the Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards that impacts these financial statements. Overall, just a quick highlight of what we do as an audit as we go through and gather information or evidence so that we can produce our auditor's report. And part of the, part of the tasks there are listed, are listed there, and of course, a lot of that just involves gathering evidence for how backup for transactions that flow through your general ledger, looking at the inflows and the outflows, as well as journal entries, items that adjust the records. And then on the following page, you will see here that the, the audit overview, the audit is complete, pending council approval of the financial statements, receipt of the signed representation letter, as well as receipt of legal correspondence that we do gather evidence with your main legal representatives. Overall, there were no difficulties encountered during the audit or changes to our plan and excellent cooperation from, from your staff. It was the, it was the final bullet point here, the additional procedures, presentation and disclosure related to the asset retirement obligations, as well to financial instruments, so. So the one unique thing this year, the big change was implementing the asset retirement obligations. And that, that section of P S A basically states that if you are required to remediate any type of asset that you have either on on, when you do work on it or when you dispose of it, you're obligated now to record that liability. So, so in your case, previously, you'd always had shown the, your landfill liability as a future cost to close and monitor those landfills. Now that has been rolled into this new asset retirement obligation as well, too. It also picks up things like sewer lagoons and and those type of things, as well as gravel pits, asbestos in buildings. So as a result, then these things had to be determined with the assistance of of some professionals in that area, so that did cause, cause a delay in getting that all together and then getting it into your capital asset system and figuring all that out. So it was a large undertaking by your staffs and their consultants, so that then just related, was related to the delay in the finalization of these financial statements. And then as we go through, I'll highlight that a little more. And then next, overall, there was one, one one unadjusted difference. In twenty twenty two, there was an FCM grant that you were entitled to for a little, almost eighty thousand dollars that wasn't recorded until twenty twenty three, so that, that was a difference that we are obligated to, to let you know. It's not large enough to go back and change the twenty twenty two financial statements, but that, that was something that should have been in twenty twenty two that ended up being in twenty twenty three, but you got, got the funds you were entitled to, so. Next, we'll take a look at your financial assets at the end of the year. So financial assets are, are assets that you are either cash or items that will be turned into cash. And you can see cash remains your largest financial asset. And that did increase for a couple of things, being, being your year-end surplus, as well as your payables were up at the end of the year due to various things, including some, some capital amounts that were payable at the end of the year for, for projects that you had ongoing. As well to your accounts receivable, you can see there that they did decline year over year, so that and have, and that's mainly related to some HST that was outstanding in the prior year that was collected. So that receivable has went down as well. At the end of the year, you had some other AR in relation to some ICIP grant funding that was outstanding, so that increased your receivables for about a hundred and fifty thousand, and then as well to you add some receivables in relation to funding for the for the, for the trail bridge from some various organizations, so that caused your other receivables to increase. Next, your taxes receivable, you can see there, they did go up slightly at the end of the year, you're at ten point one percent, so it's a point one over, being in the low risk range in comparison to to nine point five in the previous year and six point two in twenty twenty one, so that's you're just, just sitting there right on the low risk range as identified by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. Next, you will see there just the bar, five-year bar graph of the same numbers on the next slide. And yeah, the large green bar representing your cash. And then next we come to your financial liabilities. So then, these are the amounts that, that you owe to others, and this is where you will see the impact of the asset retirement obligation. In your case, the asset retirement obligation was implemented on a modified retroactive basis, so that it was, the twenty twenty two numbers were restated as well to reflect the balances at the end of twenty twenty two. So really, what you see is the landfill closure and post-closure liability that had always been there in the past is now zero in those two years and gets rolled into the asset retirement obligation. And the one unique difference in calculating your landfill liability, in the past, it was always prorated based on the amount of capacity you have left in the landfills. So that's the way it was done up until twenty twenty one on this slide. And then, starting in twenty twenty two, it was based on just the entire cost regardless of how much you've used in that landfill, so, so it's the full cost of closure and post-closure of, of your landfills. And as well, too, it also then picked up things such as asbestos in your buildings for about a hun- so the landfills were of that four point four million dollars, about three million dollars of that relates to your landfills. About a hundred thousand for asbestos, and then your septage and lagoons were about one point one million. And then as well to gravel pits, wells, and, and fuel tanks were about two hundred and thirty eight thousand. So then these are all items that are now being recorded as a liability in your financial statements. And then under the section, you are required to do that, so that's the way it has been recorded. But things like your landfill, you know, and your budget for monitoring enclosure costs on an ongoing basis, so it's, it's not like you need to actually come up and find this extra four point four million dollars. It'll, it'll sit there and you will continue to operate and calculate your operational surplus in the same manner that you did before. It's just making you aware that you do have obligations for assets that you own that you do, will have to do something probably in the future to, to deal with them, so. So that, so that is the largest component of your liabilities and the other couple of things to point out, too, as I mentioned, your crude liabilities, you can see there, they are up close to six hundred thousand year over year, and that was related to some capital projects outstanding at the end of the year, as well as amounts owing to the county and school boards, your obligatory reserve fund, so your, your parkland monies and, and Canada Community Building Fund or the gas tax. Those are monies that you've received, the three hundred and forty four thousand that you, you can spend in the future, as well to your, your other deferred revenue increased by about a hundred thousand in relation to the OCI, OCIF funding that you had set aside, and as well to you, you still have the actuarial determined employee future benefits, costs that for retiree benefits. So the next slide, you will see the bar chart of that, and you can see the impacts of of the AROs being the two larger purple bars on the right coming in in twenty twenty two and, and the ending of the orange bar, the land, the landfill closure and post-closure liability after twenty twenty one. Next, you'll see your net financial assets, and you can see there that you do remain in the black. You'll see there in twenty twenty two, it did take a bit of a dip, and that was mainly due to the implementation of the asset retirement obligation and restating the prior year's numbers. Next, you will see the, your statement of non-financial assets. So then, earlier we showed financial assets, so those are ones that you will turn into cash, whereas these, these ones mainly made up of your tangible capital assets being your land buildings, roads, bridges, arena, those type of things. These are items that you don't normally plan on turning into cash, so you can see there that the net book value of those did increase by a little over a million dollars during the year, so that was good to see. And then you still had some prepaid expenses, leaving you with one point six million dollars in your non-financial assets. And then on the next slide, you incurred about two point three million dollars in capital asset additions, as well to some of the larger things in vehicles and equipment were greater and a new tractor, and then, of course, you did work on Buxton Road and McColl's Bridge and and as well to some, some other bridges and inlet bay road. So those type of items are in in the orange piece of the pie and in land improvements, that was Hurley Park. And you did acquire some land for the landfill and buildings related to the, predominantly to the work of the, at the pool. Next, you'll see just a five-year summary of the additions and amortizations over the years. You can see there that I, nicely, the, the orange, orange bar is higher than the, the blue bar, because of course, as your assets get, get older, you do need to replace them, so that you can see there, you, you are having keeping up with the, some additions year over year. And then next, we will come to what I consider to be the main slide of the presentation. You will see there that the your accumulated surplus in total on your financial statements, it shows that you have twenty three million dollars in accumulated surplus. But if you take a look at that, more than half of that is all tied up in in your tangible capital assets or your invested in capital assets being the net book value of your capital assets, less the, any unfinanced capital associated with that or asset retirement obligations, as well to you have some employee future benefits, and then as well to your operational surplus is, was almost eight hundred thousand at the end of the year, and that normally gets transferred into reserves, so that there you will see, too, that before that transfer, your reserves did remain fairly consistent year over year at ten million dollars, so those are the amounts that you have and that you can utilize moving forward, and then leaving the twenty three million dollars in accumulated surplus. And then next, you'll see the reserve and reserve fund balances over the years and working capital being kind of the main one, consistent, as well as specific reserves for capital and such. Next, we come to the quick summary of your consolidated statement of operations. And this just highlights the fact that under P S A, you do show an annual surplus versus within your tax rate budget, it should come to zero, so that's what the first column does. It takes the the public sector accounting numbers adjusted for things that are different from your budget and the fact that you, you don't budget for amortization when you set your tax rate budget, but you do budget to spend money on capital as well as transfers to and from reserves, so you can see there that in the budget column, it does come down to zero and then as well, too, and the actuals as well. I, I guess the one thing to keep in mind, too, years where you have capital funding for like grants, donations using the, the gas tax or the Canada Community Building Fund for capital asset additions, those numbers will create an annual surplus, because of course, the expenses for those don't hit until the amortization comes in. So you can see there that in both cases, then, in all the cases, the lines do come down to zero. And then as well, too, when you take a look at the next slide, you'll just see the summary of your revenue and expenses over the years and the blue bar exceeding the orange bar over the years, so that means you have more revenue than expenses. And then on the following slide, you will see there your, your summary of actual revenues to budget during the year, you will see that there that you were higher than budget, a couple of items to note being your investment income being, being better and higher rates and having more cash in the bank, causing you, your investment income to go almost for a little over four hundred thousand over budget. Then as well to some grants on the provincial side, were with the OCIF being deferred, being a little lower than budget, and then as well to your user charges, so that includes pretty much thing, everything that, that you do charge your great payers and visitors for, being water and sewer fees being the largest component, almost a little over three hundred and sixty three thousand, as well as building and septic permits, landfill fees, planning and zoning fees were up this year based on activity. And then as well to the donations, largest, almost all predominantly for the, the bridge work that you did on the trail from other agencies and, and groups, and then as well, too, you utilized the Canada Community Building Fund for the Buxton Road, so you were, let's see, about a little eight hundred thousand over budget, so that was good. And then the following slide gives you a breakdown on the pie chart there. And as usual, property taxation is the largest component for, for you. And then the following slide shows you where you spent your money. And you can see there that you were over, you were over budgeted on your revenues, but you did come in under budget on your expenditure, so that was good to see. And some of that does, just some cost savings and reduce costs in various areas there. And so until you were about four, three, four hundred thousand dollars under budget on your expenses as provided by, by the type of expenses, and then on the following slide, you will see the various pieces of the pie there and and of course, protection services does include fire and policing, so that's a, one of the larger components there, and then transportation for roads is also one of the larger, larger components as usual. And then on the following slide, you will see then the expenses broken down by type, which gives you maybe a little different view of the expenses there, so that's what, just a different summary there, and you know, salaries and benefits being the largest component historically, as, as of course, that's how you provide your services with, with your staff. And as well, too, there was some positive variances on that line, and so then in total, nine point six million, almost nine point seven million dollars in expenses. And then the following slide gives you just the pie chart view of that as well. That's where things stand for that piece of the, the audit for twenty twenty three, so. I'm sure if anyone had any questions.
Thanks, Richard. Questions? Aces? Microphone.
Yeah, I have a question basically on slide eight, and it's just something because it stands out pretty strong. The two end columns that you were talking about, the purple ones, they're related to asset retirement. My question is more so, is that something that just pictorially shows? Or is that something that we have had to and will continue to have to add expenses to our, our, our operating procedure and/or reserves? Or is this just the way they're now starting to show it? It's mostly graphical. Is it an actual dollar hit? Or is it just radically representation change?
Through you, through you, Mayor Burton, the yeah, the, the two new columns being for the asset retirement obligation, so that, that is the new requirement under P S A. But as you operate day to day and you're setting your tax rate budget, it should not really impact on what you do there. I think what it will do is, moving forward, as staff change and requirements change, at least you'll know the items and and assets you have that might, you might need to do something with it if you need to either modify them, dispose of them, that you might, let's say, have some asbestos work that you need to do in a building if you're doing any work there. Your landfills, you've already had those budgeted and monitoring costs and closure costs have already been built into your operating budget, so no, it, it should not have an impact on your actual day-to-day operations. It should just give you information knowing planning forward of, of what you need to do with assets because they do, might have a liability attached to.
Cease?
So it's really just a, a recording and tracking adjustment to, to give us better information rather than impacting on costs at the moment?
That is correct, and yeah, I mean, similar to the way the, similar to the way the landfill liability was in the past. Yep.
Other questions? If not, resolution?
That members of council for the municipality of Highlands East receive the presentation by Baker Tilly Auditor for the municipality, and that council approves the corporation of the municipality of Highlands East twenty twenty three financial statements and authorizes the mayor and CAO treasurer to sign the management's responsibility for the consolidated financial statements.
Could have someone move. Councillor Lewis, second by Deputy Mayor Rail. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thanks, Richard.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Hope you have a good meeting and a good day.
Department reports, building, building department monthly operations report. Let's call him coming in.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor and Council. So we have the building summary for March today for council's information. I won't go through the numbers, but as you can see there, it's a little bit slower than last year, but it's like, it's kind of slowly picking up here this winter. So that's for the number part, and then we've also added in some info on the septic reinspection program. So we're trying to show you how we're going to tackle these high-risk ones this year in twenty twenty five. And I guess any of the high risks that are unresolved, we'll have to have a, a safe building order as per the building code, so I know that was asked, I think, at the last meeting, so. Anyway, those are kind of my comments for today, but I can answer questions, councillor Mayor.
Thanks, Colin. Questions? Cease?
I just have one call, and I guess, you know, every time you see something almost didn't happen, whatever it was before, which is basically what the construction values are, you have a tendency to ask the question of what would cause that? And I recognize the building department has absolutely no control over that number. But in your mind, can you foresee or give us some insight as to what could be impacting those numbers?
Yeah, no, like I say, I've been picking my brain, too, to see if there's anything we can do to help this, but it just seems like depending on the winter and the weather and kind of what's going on. So again, I'm really hopeful that eventually this will pick back up, but for now, it just seems like it's still slow.
Any questions? Resolution?
That council received the building department monthly operations report is submitted by the chief building officials. Information only.
If someone move. Councillor Mackenzie, second by councillor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. Thanks, Colin.
Thank you.
Bylaw, bylaw, operations report. Aiden?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I believe you have the report there before you. As spring starts, comes closer and closer, we're looking to tackle more of the cleaning clears in the coming month. If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thanks, Aiden. Questions? Resolution?
The council received the monthly operations report for the bylaw department is submitted by the bylaw officer.
If someone move councillor Lewis, second by councillor Strong. All in favor? Carried. Short-term rental licensing report? Kim?
Good morning, Mayor Burton and members of council. The STR monthly is before you. Just the way the meeting worked this month, we did have to do our statistics a little bit early before the end of March, and just as a quick update, we're currently at forty-one applications received, twenty-two approved, ten rejected and nine pending. As previously mentioned, our rejected applications are typically going to be building code infractions and septic capacity issues. We've definitely seen an uptick in inquiries around short-term rentals. And as sort of previously mentioned, we are going to be starting to send out first warning letters to the identified rentals that we have in host compliance. So I think we've got about a hundred and ten in there that are non-compliant and where we've recognized the properties. The only other thing I would mention is we are just starting quarter two of twenty twenty five. So at the end of April, our first quarter, mat taxes will need to be coming in. We've had the first payment come in already, actually. And our STR licensing clerk will be sending out some communications to licensees to remind them that they need to get their taxes in and reported by the end of the month. The only other thing that council may be interested in, and I did provide a link to it in the report, a tiny township had a a challenge to their bylaw, go to Superior a challenge to their bylaw, go to Superior Court. This was kind of a much anticipated decision. The decision was made and it is attached to the report that Tiny's bylaw, which in some degrees is actually more restrictive than ours, was fully legal and entirely within councils' purview to 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 pass and enforce. So I'm happy to answer any questions if council has any at this time, but otherwise we're just going to keep on trucking and enforcement will start June first. So we're getting into the the kind of the process of starting to send out warning letters and making sure that people who we've provided conditional approvals to are getting those conditions fulfilled now that the well, I was going to say now that the snow is off the ground, but you know, once the snow actually decides to get off the ground.
Thanks, Kim. Questions? Cease?
When the, Kim, when the, when the monies are collected at this point in time? Is it Highland face that collect the money? Or is it a third party or is it the county?
Oh, are you talking about the licensing fees or the mat?
Taxes, either one of them.
Sure. So the the answer for both of those is depending on how it's received, it all comes into our coffers. So we do have accounts to receive the map payments as well as the licensing fees. If the payments are made directly to the municipality via cash, check debit or e-transfer, that money comes kind of directly in. If it's made through host compliance or even through plastique, which is another credit card processor that the building department often uses, it comes in through their portal and then is deposited into into our accounts. So we have a bunch of different ways to receive the money, but ultimately the money comes to the municipality and we account for it.
Cease?
The other thing too is I know in the math tax, there is the fifty fifty split with that. And I wasn't sure at this point in time where we had developed the process enough with the program enough to be able to do that now, or is it just in a holding account of some kind until I believe we need a corporation or something to basically determine how that all going to be dealt with? Do you know if we progress to that point?
So through you, Mayor Burton to the deputy mayor. My understanding is that the municipal service corporation that will be used to receive the fifty percent of the funds that are to go towards tourism at the county level. They're still working through, I believe, legal process there. So at this point, and our treasurer C A O can certainly confirm for me. My understanding is that we're receiving the monies and holding them. And I believe sort of as more mat tax funds come in, we'll be setting up a sort of a reserve fund for fifty percent of those those monies to go into so that when we're ready to start transferring to the county, everything's sort of sitting in that that account ready to be transferred once the process is ready to go.
Thank you. Britt, did you have anything to add to that?
Nope. What Kim has alluded to is exactly that. We have our revenue account set up. The money comes in and until such time as the M S C is established, then and we have the outline of how those payments are going to be made to that corporation, then we'll just hold the monies to Kim's point in a reserve until such time as we can transfer it over.
Other questions?
And so just for those who are operating their short term rentals right now without a license, what would, what would we say to them?
So through you, Mayor Burton to councillor Lewis. We're really, really encouraging folks to get their applications in. We are starting, well, we have been, but we are starting to sort of more vigorously review kind of where where we're seeing listings, where we're seeing revenue coming into short term rentals. And the host compliance program actually scrapes a lot of websites to to pull some of that information for us. So we're starting to see where folks are still kind of actively renting and we haven't received something from them. Those folks are going to be the first ones to receive their warning letters, and we're hoping to get the first batch of those out by the end of this week, early next week. It's always better to voluntarily comply and get your stuff in. If you have any questions or concerns or you're nervous about something, please give myself or Kate, our S T R clerk, a call. We're very happy to help people kind of work through this. We try and have an educational approach. However, when June first comes along, unfortunately, if we have folks that sort of are persistently not getting the information into us, we will be having to issue orders and those orders may and probably most likely will have administrative penalties attached to those. So there will be a financial impact to folks that are that are doing that. So the admin penalty kind of per occurrence for the S T R by law is two hundred and fifty dollars. And the entire license really is is five hundred bucks. So it's it's a much more affordable to start working through the process with us now. We're doing our best to help people sort out situations where, you know, maybe they have concerns about shore road allowances or septics or things like that. It it's better to kind of get started now versus us having to potentially shut you down, which we'd really rather not do. We'd like to work with the public and operators. We'd rather use the carrot than the stick at this point. So we really encourage folks to contact us if they have questions or concerns. We've been working with a lot of operators, insurance companies, short term rental agencies, you know, so Kate is happy and willing to to talk to people through these processes and for more complicated stuff. I've been following up and assisting her with that. So and our lovely building department's been very helpful as well. So.
Cease?
I know I asked this question before, but I want to ask it again, not because I don't know the answer, but I think the public needs to know. And that is, if you get, if you could ding the two hundred and fifty bucks on the one goal, and you say, well, that's the cost of doing business, have a nice day. There needs to be, and I think you explained before that that is just not going to be the answer. There's going to be a either graduated or complicated or more 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 cumulative way of dealing with that as time progresses. Am I correct?
That is correct. The other note is that it's not just sort of a two hundred and fifty dollar fee once. An admin penalty can be applied upon every every occurrence that we see a violation of the bylaw. You know, sort of, you know, we give you an admin penalty and then we we find out next week that you're still renting and we have proof that you're still renting. We can issue another admin penalty. So even just using that sort of very basic kind of lower level penalty, that can still accumulate a substantial cost. And something we've heard time and time again from short term rental operators is, you know, a lot of them are are using S T Rs to help just cover their cottage, their costs for their cottages. So I think it's much better to bring yourself into compliance and kind of and and work with the program. We have a fairly low kind of cost bar for entry versus kind of accumulating these penalties or potentially, you know, being in a situation where the municipality has to take legal action. That's a lot more expensive than sort of paying the five hundred bucks and working through some compliance issues. And if, you know, you have a problem with your septic or something like that, it's important to start working through those processes anyway, whether you're renting or not, because, you know, we a lot of people get their water from the lake. A lot of people have small kids and things like that playing in the lake. Nobody wants pollution of that type entering our waterways.
Thank you. Other questions? Resolution?
The council received the report, short term rental licensing report, March two thousand twenty-five from the director of the short term rental licensing program.
If someone move councillor Lewis, but let's let him go by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Thanks, Kim. Firefighter department monthly operations report. Chris?
Morning, Mayor Burton and members of council. Before you have the monthly operations report, it's detailing sixteen calls for March and fifty-six calls to date. Below is the details of each call. Station one has two calls, station two had three. Station three had eight calls and station four also had three. Unless there's any questions, that's all for that report.
Questions? Resolution?
The council accepts this fire department monthly operations report as information is submitted by the fire chief.
If someone move. Councillor Strong second by councillor Lewis. All in favor? Carried. Fire department response fees recovery.
Thank you, Mayor. This report is not so short compared to the last one, but I feel it's detailed pretty well in the analysis and background section. So I'll read it word for word. What is this? This is asking for approval to go into an agreement with Firemark, which is a company that collects funds on behalf of the municipality to recover costs at fires. So the background for this is currently the fire department does not recover these costs for fire protection services for insured perils such as structured fires. Is it that it is accepted that the municipality, you sorry, the municipal levy covers the costs associated with the fire protection? And this is true for all fixed costs associated with the fire department, including fire halls, trucks and equipment. The additional expenses the fire department incurs while fighting each specific fire are eligible for recovery through the property owner's insurance policy. Firemark is a Canadian company that specializes in recovery of funds from insurance companies based on the costs incurred by the fire department while dealing with an emergency within the municipality. Property insurance policies provide coverage to pay these costs. There is no additional cost to the property owners as this coverage is within the policies already. The municipality does not currently bill for these services. Therefore, the insurance company is retaining all funds from the property owner since the insurance company is not paying out on the policy coverage. If an agreement with Firemark is implemented, costs would be recovered from the property owner's insurance to cover the additional expenses the fire department responding to a call for service and the property owner would not be adversely affected for the fire response. It is important to note that monies would be would be recovering our additional coverages in the policy and do not reduce or come out of the property owner's payout. By partnering with Firemark, the municipal municipality will be able to maximize its cost recovery while minimizing the staff time associated with chasing insurance companies. Firemark provides insurance experts who communicate with property owners insurance company and in returns, Firemark receives thirty percent of the recovered money. There is no additional cost to the fire department, even if the property owner's insurance policy does not have coverage. There's no cost to the property owner because they have already paid for the insurance coverage in their policy. A link to the company for more detail has been provided here at firemark.com. Many of Ontario fire departments are currently using Firemark to offset costs to their departments for their emergencies to attend. About one third of Ontario's municipalities, including one First Nations community. Furthermore, the municipality does not have the staff resources to administer recovery program like this, which is why we are proposing entering into an agreement with Firemark. With increasing emergency services costs, this is an effective way to recover costs for necessary service without added financial burden to our budget. Financial implications, the money is recovered by Firemark is cost recovery only and is only collectible on policies that have coverage that is already paid. Therefore, there is no negative impact on the property owner. Total cost recovery is different, difficult to estimate, but these funds will help offset costs for fire response program. It is to be monitored and evaluated after a full year in the program. Follow up action would be to amend our current user fee by law or create a standalone department, a specific by law, and also to enter into an agreement with Firemark to allow them to collect funds. Attached to your report today is a flyer from Firemark for you and the public to view if you wish. That's all that I have for that report unless you have any questions.
Thanks, Chris. Questions? Kim?
Chris, is this going to have an impact on insurance rates? Vehicle insurance, you have a minor claim and sometimes it's better to let it go than it would be to put it in and and see a big increase in your premiums.
No, that kind of the size of the claim also is kind of reflective of the size of our response. So generally, a small fire where we would respond to a minimal timeframe would not even create an invoice. It would have to be a claim big enough where we would be on scene for multiple hours and multiple trucks. So I think the we wouldn't even go after it in that case. If there's no claim, there's there's no invoice that would be collected upon.
Yeah.
Just one more thing. Who's going to call the shot on this, the fire department? To to invoice the company? I assume it would be us that makes that decision. If it was five hundred dollars, we might let it go. If it was five thousand, we wouldn't let it go.
No, it's if there is a claim that with recoverable costs. So this is only for costs that aren't recoverable any other way. So this would be on foam, on damaged hose, on damaged bunker gear, stuff that we're not collecting on now. Firefighter wages. And it's only on the affected. So your normal taxation is covering the maintenance and repair of the halls, maintaining the trucks, purchasing equipment. But the additional cost for an emergency response is covered by that individual's insurance instead of the rest of the tax base paying for their emergency response.
Yeah.
Does every policy have that that coverage or it is a rider, the homeowner opts into?
Every policy holder has that in there already. The dollar value does change, though it could be anywhere from a thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars to unlimited. So we would only be billing for what is recoverable.
Yeah.
There's one more question, I promise. Is there a deductible for the policyholder for that coverage?
No, this is an additional coverage, so it has nothing to do with what the owner or what we have to pay. It has negative, zero negative effect on the policyholder. They've already paid for this coverage and it's not being paid out. The only person benefiting by not paying it out is the insurance company.
Cease?
I'm going to assume for the sake of argument that this is related to an incident. So it's an incident specific, and I think you made that clear that it doesn't cover the regular maintenance of halls, trucks or anything else. So if you're going to fight a fire and then you incur damage based on that particular fire, then that would be what you would be included in that particular claim for that individual. That, does that make sense?
Yeah, so it's not just damage. It is additional expenses. So there is additional wages on scene as well. So that's going to offset our wages for those additional hours. Those are recoverable as well. But yes, you are correct. And it's only for fire. It doesn't apply to motor vehicle accidents. We are already involved with another program through the M T O for collecting those funds.
Chris, in the event that somebody does not have fire coverage, you just don't have insurance or, as you said before, the insurance company does not cover that particular aspect of it. And you do incur the same kind of thing that would happen if the person was covered. How do we get our money back?
Unfortunately, I don't think we can in that case without causing undue hardship to the community member. And I it's not something I want to pursue.
Thank you. Other questions? Resolution?
The council received the fire department response fees recovery report as reported by the fire chief. And further, the council approves entering into an agreement with Firemark to allow for fire department cost recovery for insured perils and further that the bylaw and agreement be brought forward at today's meeting as amended.
If someone move councillor Lewis second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Parks, Recreation and Facilities, Parks, Recreation and Facilities Monthly Report.
Hello?
Morning, Mayor Burton and members of council. You do have my monthly report in front of you. I have nothing more to add to it. More than happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions? Resolution?
The council received the Parks Recreation Facilities Monthly Report is submitted by the property supervisor as information only.
Someone move? Councillor Lewis second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? Let's go. Thanks, Jim.
Thanks.
Environmental Mental Monthly Report. Patrick? Patrick.
Good morning Mayor and Council, I believe you have my report before you, the only update I'd like to provide is in regard to the car of sewage system. We've been suffering some extremely increased flows. Um staff have been running the pump uh starting Thursday at five thirty AM and. Increase to what's included in the report, so we had staff in from five thirty on Thursday till Sunday night at about two thirty AM, I'd just like to. Give a shout out to them and thank them for working pretty tirelessly, keeping flows under control using our external pump, so. They've been doing twelve hour shifts now and finally have a break until the next during event. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? Resolution?
The council received the environmental monthly report, April twenty twenty five, as submitted by the environmental supervisor.
Someone move. Councillor Strong second by councillor Lewis. All in favor, carried, thank you, thanks Patrick. Public Works, uh monthly, Public Works Update, Perry.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of council and staff. Uh before you is my roads update for the uh this month's uh council meeting. As you can see, uh Public Works is currently working uh with the contractor to start the McCall's uh bridge, which uh. Is weather dependent, uh but we're hoping to still start work on the replacement of that structure mid-May. Hurley Park, uh winters being a a bit of a uh obstacle for Public Works uh. And uh as soon as uh the contractor can get back on site, but we do know that the trees have been ordered and uh we're in constant communication with the contractor. Um still reviewing the municipal boundary road agreements, health and safety of our staff is ongoing. RFP as a result of the twenty twenty five approved budget, um we have now uh uh gone through the process. To receive our new twenty five hundred series truck. Roof replacement RFP has been completed and we're in the uh selection process as we speak. Uh the RFT, uh the tender for the aggregate is complete with Leveque Brothers being a successful supplier of our granular material for twenty twenty five. Pre-planning of the twenty twenty five construction work as soon as uh Mother Nature uh allows us to continue doing. And I will be reviewing our winter blowing operations efficiencies over the summer months moving into the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six winter mean season. Also, we'll be reviewing the wayside operations efficiencies. And as of March twenty fourth, load restrictions have been applied to our municipal road network. Uh they typically stay on till mid-May, uh with the recent uh turn of events with the uh uh with this uh ice storm. Uh there have been some temporary uh lifts on those restrictions to accommodate uh. Excuse me, our fuel and propane uh deliveries to uh get to the homes that uh so desperately needed. On the waste side of things, uh staff are working on the design of the new signage for our sites and I'm happy to report as of this morning. That uh those uh. Those signs have been ordered and uh we eagerly anticipate having them so that we can uh uh get them installed um. Prior to, I believe it's May first, maybe June first, sorry, I'll have to check with that, but I think it's uh May first, June first, whatever, one of those two months. Um the uh household hazardous waste events have been booked for twenty twenty five. We uh have two events this year. Uh July fifth at the Glamorgan Transfer Station and September twenty seventh at the Torrey Hill Waste uh disposal site. Uh due to a recent pricing exchange uh changes from GFL Environmental in relation to mobilizations fees, which were absolutely atrocious. Uh we have had to opt to cancel the hazardous waste event for the Torrey Hill site in May. Fortunately, the May one is typically the quietest one of the three events, uh making this the practical choice. Uh for removal due to the increased costs and we will be looking at those increased costs and seeing what we can do to. Either remedy uh the costs so that we can have another uh event for twenty twenty six. Or work towards uh something uh through our in-house operations. That is my Public Works report uh at this moment, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? Cease?
I I just uh, it's not a question, it's just more or less a, I guess, a comment or a statement and. I mean, Mother Nature in in a process of forty eight hours created an average that would be unbelievable. And I'm gonna say for the sake of argument, for us to try to clean it myself is gonna take more than a couple of days. Are we looking at uh probably two, maybe three months, uh because I think that's probably where we're looking. I can't see that happening a week or two, we don't have the people, we don't have the resources. Um but we will eventually have to deal with it, would that be a fair statement?
Uh through you, Mr. Mayor, to Deputy Mayor Ryle, you are absolutely correct, um. We have uh been fortunate enough to only have a a portion of our uh road network system affected by this uh ice storm. Um we have all the roads open and passable other than uh one area of the County Lake Road that is closed due to water being over the road. Um we will be anticipating um once we can get out there and. Remove all of the excess brush and logs from the uh the sides of the roads, we will do a full scale cleanup. Uh we're going to try to accommodate that in-house with our in-house staff. As we have the the tools and the resources to do that, but unfortunately, yes, it will take a bit of time to do it. I am hopefully not anticipating a couple of months, I'm hoping that we can get things back in order in two to three weeks, um. But uh as it stands now, we're already behind the eight ball coming into the first week in April. Uh with winter still hanging its head over us, we're trying to do repairs. On road washouts and and flooding and so on and so forth, and then having the trees alongside the road. It's not a pretty sight, but at least the roads are all maintained and passable until we can uh do a a a full cleanup.
Other, other questions? Resolution?
The council received the Public Works Monthly Update as prepared by the Public Works Manager for information purposes only.
If someone move, Deputy Mayor Ryle second by councillor McKenzie. All in favor, it's carried. Uh Public Works Department surplus twenty twenty fourteen Chevy Silverado half ton.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh this report is to um. Ask that council approve that the twenty twenty, or sorry, the twenty fourteen Chevy Silverado half ton. Uh be declared surplus uh in order for the municipality to remove this asset from um from the municipality. And use those uh those funds to uh put back in our reserve fund. As we accommodate and and require new equipment, uh we need to surplus out uh aged equipment that has uh. Gone to its useful life uh process or beyond that, and by declaring this item surplus. Then we can remove it from our capital assets and it decreases the amount of finances required to replace it, so. Uh that's the ask of this report.
Questions? Resolution?
The council received the report, Public Works Department surplus twenty fourteen Chevrolet Silverado half ton is prepared by the Public Works Manager. And further, that council declare the twenty fourteen Chevrolet Silverado half ton as surplus.
Someone move, councillor Lewis second by councillor Strong. All in favor, it's carried, thank you, thanks Perry.
Thank you.
Also, I think we will have a five minute break or or so and then we'll get into our public meeting.
The council commended the regular meeting of council for the scheduled public planning meeting and it be declared open to discuss the following bylaw amendments made under section thirty four of the Planning Act. Pertaining to participants or sorry applicants Blisniak and Frolich.
If someone move, also Lewis second by Council McKenzie on paper carried the public planning meeting. Uh, the participants of the planning meeting wish to share the sentiments of the land acknowledgement statement delivered earlier that started the regular media council. Kim.
Good morning. This is a public meeting under section thirty four of the Planning Act. The purpose of this meeting is to ensure that sufficient information is made available to enable members of the public to understand. And provide comment on zoning by law amendments that are being considered by council today. If you wish to be notified of council's decision regarding the applications being discussed today, then please ensure that you notify Robin Rogers or municipal clerk. So um, our municipal planner Chris Jones isn't able to join us today, so I have drafted our reports in consultation with him. Um, and I'll get started. So our first file that we'll be considering this morning is RZ dash zero two dash twenty twenty five for the lands of John and Carolyn Blisniak. This property is located in part lot twenty six concession eight and part of the original shoreline road allowance in front of lot twenty six concession eight. Um, also known as part four on plan nineteen R one oh four nine nine. This is located in the geographic township of Cardiff in the municipality of Highlands East. The civic address for this property is ten eighty nine Finn Point Road and our tax rule number is four six oh one one oh two triple zero zero eight eight zero zero. As of this morning, Crow Valley Conservation and the Halbert County Planning Department have provided comments for this application. Neither agency has concerns and I will note that CBCA did advise that a Crow Valley permit will be required prior to undertaking the proposed work. So at this time, I will provide a an overview of the planning report for this uh for this file. Uh, so council may have some familiarity with this property. Um, ten eighty nine Finn Point Road is located on lower Potash Lake. They are at the end of the municipally maintained portion of Finn Point Road. Uh, with the remainder of Finn Point Road acting as a private right of way through the applicant's property uh to the landowners to the south. The applicants um previously applied for and purchased their shoreline road allowance from the municipality back in twenty twenty one. And rezone their property to the shoreline residential type one exception. Uh, the SR one dash thirty four zone in twenty twenty two to recognize the floor area and setbacks of the existing. Legal noncompliant cottage that was partially located on the shoreline at that time. Um, so this property uh has sixty meters of shoreline frontage and an area of about thirty six hundred square meters. The property is accessed via Finn Point Road. Um, which the municipal maintenance ends at their property. Um, the property is currently occupied with a one point five story um dwelling. It's a sort of a story and a half bungalow with an attached lake facing deck. There's a small garage on the lakeside um of Finn Point Road between the the house and the road. Um. A shed and then there is a dock located along the shoreline. The applicants are proposing to demolish that existing house and garage and essentially redevelop the lot. Um, they'll be replacing this dwelling with a new one point five story dwelling that has a a larger covered porch. And there will be a new garage that will be located on the other side of Finn Point Road on the on the owner's property that will come uh comply with the zoning by law. The shed and the marine facility slash dock will continue to be maintained. Um, so the topography on this lot, it's pretty flat. Um, and we did note uh that through consultation with Crow Valley Conservation uh that the northerly portion of this lot. Um, is situ- that is situated between Finn Point Road and Potash Lake does have a small wetland. Um, so in terms of our policies, um, uh, the provincial policy statement uh designates this property as being in the rural lands. That permits a cottage and they are um continuing that use. Um, the provincial policy statement also directs the po- that authorities protect, improve or restore the quality or quantity of water. Um, in sort of part of the compliance with this staff have recommended a site plan agreement under section forty one of the Planning Act. That will require the property owners to retain and maintain the existing vegetation within the shoreline setback and within. Uh, a fifteen meter buffer around the wetland feature on the lot. Uh, the applicants um at the time of this report had submitted their application, but actually they've um. They and staff have signed and executed the agreement and it's actually been sent off to our solicitor for registration. Uh, in terms of county policy, um, this continues sort of to be uh to be in conformity with the the county's official plan. Resource based recreational development like a cottage is permitted. Um, and uh, we are addressing the sort of natural heritage feature, which is the wetland. Um, by following the CBCA recommendation of a fifteen meter no development buffer around it. And we'll be zoning all of that wetland and that fifteen meter buffer in an EP or an environmental zone. Or environmental protection zone, which will make sure that um no development will happen in that area. With regard to the municipality's official plan, um, in reviewing the site plan and the building plans that were provided. Um, we do think that this constitutes um good design. Um, the building is larger um than it than the original. However, they've uh been able to incre- increase the setback from a little over seven meters to about thirteen meters from the high watermark. Um, and they've also increased the side yard setback. The other cottage was really, really close to the neighbor uh neighboring property line. It was one point eight meters. They've moved it back to four meters. Um, there's been a minor increase in height, but it's not huge, so it still blends in around sort of the tree line and the neighboring properties. Um, and staff do believe that um by implementing site plan control to make sure that the existing. A water waterfront remains in a relatively uh natural state and by protecting the environmental protection. Uh, zone and the wetland area, we're in compliance um with the official plan policies. Um, so with that all said, um, while there is a substantial increase in the floor area here. Um, we're improving upon our setbacks. We're not creating something kind of large and imposing rate in the shoreline. And um, we're actually, you know, maintaining and improving uh the shoreline setback and um lot coverage. So um, staff have no concerns. Our recommendation is that the proposed bylaw uh be approved today at uh at the council meeting. Um, because the site plan agreement um that was sent to the applicants has been executed. And uh, we've sent it off to the solicitor and I'm happy to answer any questions should council have them.
Questions? Saying none, Kim.
Um, thank you. So through you, Mayor Burton, I do believe that the property owners and their agent, uh, Mr. Michael Windstone are here. Um, if we don't mind promoting them, just if they can provide any comment if they have any before we move on to the next file.
Good morning, council. Um, my name is Michael Winston. I'm the agent on behalf of uh John and Carolyn Blisniak. Uh, I don't have any comments to add. I'm just here in case there's any questions or clarity required um from staff members or from Kim. Um, which it seems like there are none, um, and I appreciate you guys looking after the application and reviewing. Kim, you did a great job.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions for Mr. Uh, Mr. Winston?
Questions saying none.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, thank you to to Michael and to to John who I see is in attendance there. We'll move on to our next file. Uh, so the second file we have today is for um. It is sorry for Bill Freilich and um. Linda Larwell, um, this property is located in part of lot nineteen concession eleven being parts one through five on plan. Nineteen R seventy five forty six in the geographic township of Cardiff in the municipality of Highlands East. Uh, the civic address for this one is eleven eighty seven Thunderbird Drive and the roll number is four six oh one four oh one triple zero zero nine nine zero zero. Uh, so similarly to the other application, uh, as of this morning, we've just received comments from CBCA. Uh, and the county of Halliburton, neither of whom who have any concerns. And actually the proposed development for this is located outside of the regulated area for Crow Valley Conservation. Uh, so it's not anticipated that a permit will be required. Um, so I'll just give a brief overview of the planning report. Um, so this property is eleven eighty nine Thunderbird Drive. They're located uh on upper Potash Lake. They have seventy one meters of shoreline frontage uh and an area of about seventy six hundred square meters. The property is uh split in half more or less by um Thunderbird Drive, which is a privately maintained right of way. The shore road allowance for this property was stopped up, closed and conveyed back in two thousand and two. Um, and at that time it was subject to a right of way for the existing road over the road allowance. Uh, it appears that in the ensuing, you know, twenty years, Thunderboard Road was redirected to its current location uh sometime after two thousand and seven. Um, the property currently has a single story dwelling with an attached deck and an accessory building located thirty nine meters from the high watermark. Uh, as well as a dry land boathouse and attached deck and a shoreline deck attached to a dock at the water's edge. Uh, this property um is fairly sloping, but the proposed development envelope is well outside of the twenty meters um to the high watermark of Potash Lake. So the application came in through the building department. Uh, the applicants wish to construct a screen porch on their dwelling with a floor area of thirty eight square meters. Where fifteen square meters is normally what we permit through the zoning by law. Um, the bylaw would also recognize the legal noncompliant boathouse and deck. Um, in terms of policy, very similar to what we talked about um with um the Blisniak application. Um, the proposal is com- is compliant with a provincial policy statement and is in general conformity with both the county and the Highlands East official plans. Um, we did note that there was no mapped sensitive uh fish or wildlife habitat adjacent to this property. North Bay of Upper Potash is a cold water lake, true lake, but it's not considered at capacity uh by the ministry. Um, the proposed addition is well outside of the minimum setback for the high watermark. Uh, we did note um that the applicant shows um a workshop in a in an accessory building located near the dwelling. Um, our site visit found that um there were some beds in there, so um it was pre- may have at some point, not sure if it still is being used as a guest cabin. Um, we permit guest cabins on lots that have a floor uh have an area of greater than point five hectares or five thousand square meters. This is co- compliant. Um. Then the only other kind of thing of note was that we did notice um that um. Back in August, when our bylaw officer was out in the summer, um, there was a gazebo, a metal metal gr- framed gazebo located on the dock. Um, at the shoreline, we don't permit uh gazebos to be located um on on docks or marine facilities. Um, so the applicant um is it will be advised that uh next summer, they're not allowed. Um, on on docks or marine facilities. Um, so the applicant um is it will be advised that uh next summer, they're not allowed to have that there. They'll have to move it back off of the dock. Um, otherwise, um, staff feel that this is a fairly minor um bylaw uh amendment. Um, we generally restrict screen rooms or porches to prevent sort of the. Unauthorized expansion of living quarters into the minimum setbacks of the waterfront area. In this situation, the lot is is large, the coverage is fine and we're quite far uh from the high watermark. Um, or any of the side yard setbacks in terms of uh neighboring property owners or other impacts. Um, so with that, staff recommend per approving the proposed amendment today. Um, subject to any questions council might have, and I do believe the applicant is in attendance with us.
Questions? Seeing none.
Sure, I'll just ask if we could promote our applicant, um. And then uh, just ensure that they don't have anything else they want to add.
A lot of buttons to click, sorry about that. Um, thanks council for taking uh the time to consider my application and Kim, thanks so much for all of your help in this process. But a learning experience. It's my wife and I at first foray at owning a cottage and. And learning all the ins and outs and uh, um. Wasn't aware that previous owner had constructed that little gazebo on the dock, wasn't aware that it wasn't allowed, so no problem, but. Not put it back up next year. Um, and uh, hope to have a favorable decision and thanks so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Bill. Uh, just to clarify, uh, through you, Mayor Burton, any questions for for Bill?
Questions? Seeing none, Kim.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Bill, for your attendance today. Uh, so through you, Mayor Burton, that covers all of the applications we already hear today and um. That that uh ends our public meeting.
Thanks, Kim. Uh, adjournment?
The council adjourned the public planning meeting at eleven oh six AM and the council reconvened to the regular meeting of council.
Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Uh, the public planning meeting recommendations?
That having held a public meeting in accordance with section thirty four of the Planning Act and having heard and considered all comments received, council approves the following recommendations from planning staff, those being. That the report pertaining to RZ zero two twenty twenty five Blisniak be received and council approved the zoning by law amendment. For this application at this meeting of April eighth, twenty twenty five. And that the report pertaining to RZ zero four twenty twenty five FroLunch be received and council approved the zoning by law amendment. For this application at this meeting of April eighth, twenty twenty five.
Someone move. Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. So we're at eight point seven finance. Updated council or new numeration by law?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good morning, members of council. So before you is just a quick report. Um, from a follow up at our last meeting with regards to an updated council remuneration by law. So through our twenty five budget and as directed by council, um, staff were to bring forward a report on council remuneration rates. Our remuneration rates were reviewed against those in the lower um, lower tier municipalities across Halliburton County. At our previous meeting on March eleventh. And a copy of that previous report was included. Following that discussion, uh, staff were directed to return with amended remuneration by law. With the following remuneration rates effective Jan one of twenty twenty five. And those amounts are listed below for each mayor, deputy mayor and councillor. Council also directed staff to increase the personal health account to a maximum of two thousand dollars annually. So the updated bylaw is on the agenda today for passage. And it would be effective as of January first, twenty twenty five.
Any questions, comments? Resolution?
The council received report updated council remuneration bylaws prepared by the CAO Treasurer and further that the council remuneration bylaw being a bylaw to establish. Remuneration rates for members of council be passed and enacted at this meeting.
If someone move? Counselor Strong, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Administration, administration monthly report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So ju- before you, council, is the administration monthly report, just a couple of updates uh for the month of uh March. So at our last uh council meeting of March eleventh, the finalized trail strategy initiative was presented and received by council. So staff are now going to be reviewing the short, medium and long term initiatives of the plan. To bring forward for discussion with council at a future meeting. Uh, some other various administrative updates um with regards to ongoing projects that we have. Uh, staff met with Bell and Associates on March the twelfth for our first biweekly check in of the municipal office design project. So at this meeting, Bell and Associates did share a bubble diagram or a rough sketch of the proposed design staff uh with staff. From this review, they did take some questions and any suggestions that they want to put forth. And our next biweekly meeting is scheduled for uh was scheduled for March twenty sixth, which was um canceled and we do have another one coming up uh this week. Our finance staff are continuing with our asset management plan uh work, make our plan compliant uh for July one of twenty twenty five. And so. That work continues with regards to levels of service and we have some workshops coming up with PSD Citywide and our department heads. To continue that work. On March the twelfth, uh, myself and our deputy treasurer participated in a kickoff meeting with PSD Citywide and this was to discuss the. Maintenance manager project, which was budgeted for in twenty five. Uh, this program is going to be utilized by a variety of departments, including public works, environment, parks and rec. And this would result in a single database for managing our asset management, our financial data. It's going to provide for work orders. Uh, infrastructure maintenance and also provides a creation of a customer facing portal. Uh, in order for staff to be able to receive complaints, concerns or comments and for us to follow up with. So that project will be ongoing for twenty twenty five. On March the nineteenth, I did participate in a joint webinar with AMO and OMAA. Uh, this was in regards to the mayor CAO relationship, building a foundation for success. So uh, as described by AMO, um, it's a critical partnership that does set the tone for the organization. Um, and can be a key factor in retention and attracting um employees and maintaining those community relationships. So. It was a very interesting session to hear from other municipalities, uh, listening to. Other CAOs and mayors and their dynamics and uh, we have a good relationship here at Highlands East, so. Again, our finance staff are continuing to work through our year end processes with the auditors. A variety of RFPs and RFTs, request for proposals, request for tenders are being released and established um every week. And on the recruitment side of things, uh, the part time economic development coordinator position, um, that posting closed March fifth. Our applicants were shortlisted and our interviews are being scheduled for this week. So we will keep council apprised of um. How that process uh completes. As well, the recruitment for the temporary general equipment operator position. As of the time of the report, it was continuing, but as of now, we have offered the position. It has been accepted and our temporary equipment operator. Will be starting as of next Monday. And those are the updates in admin for the month of March.
Thank you. Any questions? Cease?
Yes, uh, which is not a question. It's just, it's just a kind of like an expansion of what we were talking. We talked about this trails. Strategy initiative update and. Basically says at a future meeting. Um, I would like to strongly recommend that we either make that the main meeting. Uh, in light of the fact that the construction season is going to start if we're going to do anything on it at all. And if we can't do it at the main meeting, you know, first, we we schedule a second meeting. In May, because if we wait until June. And we're not going to do anything until July, and then all of a sudden the season's gone. So I think we should be looking at, if possible. To do it in 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 uh, May seventh. However. If staff is of the opinion that we need to have more time. To discuss it because of things that they found. I think it might be, in this particular case, it might be of value to have a second meeting in May.
Rick?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Ral. Um. It would be my recommendation for council to consider that we would have our regular council meeting and then I would like to, if it is council's desire. To have the discussion around the trail strategy as well as the corporate strategic plan as a separate meeting. Um, I do feel that the strategic plan and the trail strategy, they do kind of combine together, so I would like to do those as a separate. Aside, so.
So are you suggesting that would be a second meeting in May?
If council wishes, we could either do regular meeting uh at the beginning of May. And then in the afternoon, we could do a secondary meeting or if council wishes to have a second date, but um.
I. If we could do it in the afternoon. I would, I would go for that. I don't know what.
Okay. Thanks, Ben. Uh. Resolution?
The council received the administration monthly report, April twenty twenty five, as submitted by the CAO Treasurer.
They get someone to move? Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Uh, county council monthly report, I uh, I'm sure you're aware that I did declare a state of emergency for the county of Halliburton and uh. We're slowly uh getting our services back, our communication back, uh. Uh, hydro back, which I'm I'm happy to report, but uh, it's taken, it's taken quite a while and a lot of hard work. Our EOC at the county, we've been meeting uh pretty regularly on on different issues and. Uh, for that reason, the staff uh have been so busy with it that they uh. Um, we're having a hard time getting their reports ready for county council tomorrow, so we actually can't cancel county council for tomorrow. Uh, until we can get the reports done and then we'll move ahead with another meeting. Um, I just wanted to kind of update a bit on the meeting that we had here a couple of weeks ago that uh we didn't have. Uh, we're in the process of of rescheduling. I don't have a date yet, uh, because mainly because of the state of emergency, but. Uh, we're working on on trying to get a date that we can get everybody together again and then move forward with the meeting, which will be hosted here as well. Um, I think that's about all I have. Cease, did anything?
No, the only thing that I can say is it's in relation to the ASK NP, which is the new health unit. Um, things are progressing there. Uh, obviously. The uh, the fiscal year uh for the province is different than ours. We we run on the calendar year from January to December. They run from April first to March the thirty first. And so right now we have a uh, like a stewardship, which is basically a finance committee meeting on Friday. To just review where we are with the whole thing. So it's ongoing. Uh, it's not something that's going to happen in in a day or two. But we certainly are going to have some great progress by the end of twenty twenty five for sure.
Yeah. Uh, planning, planning department monthly.
Thank you, Mayor Burton. Uh, so the planning monthly is before you with our statistics. Um. We received a lot of zoning by law amendment applications in March. We received eight, so we expect to have a. A busy meeting in May. Um, just in general, a couple of highlights, uh, staff had an opportunity to uh attend a lunch and learn with uh. Pro Valley Conservation in Limerick Township. Uh, to work on streamlining our approval processes with the conservation authority. Uh, it was really, really beneficial, um, and it was nice to have a chance to uh. See our uh, our CBCA counterparts and some of our counterparts in Peterborough County and Hastings County uh in person. We also were able to uh attend and take part in the GIS stra- uh strategy SWAC session at Dizer Dell. Um, where we are hoping to contribute to a countywide GIS strategic plan. Um, the municipality's refusal of uh RZ zero eight twenty twenty four at eleven fifty Sapphire Lane. Was heard by the Ontario Land Tribunal on March twenty first. Council will be provided an update once a decision has been issued by the member. Um, and then one last note, um, wasn't really worth kind of doing a separate report. Uh, but we have added a bylaw to the uh agenda today. Um, to accept a one foot or point three meter reserve along Conto Lake Road. To fill fulfill the conditions of three consents. This is the land of grills for some lot additions, so we're recommending that. Um, the bylaw authorizing mayor and clerk to execute the appropriate documents. Will be uh, will be passed to today's meeting. Um, otherwise, as mentioned in the STR, we're starting to see some more uh encroachment agreements. Um, and shoreline applications come in in response to to that program. And I'm happy to answer any questions should council have any.
Questions? Resolution?
The council received the planning department update, March twenty twenty five, as prepared by the junior planner's information.
If someone move, Counselor Lewis, second by. Counselor Strong. All in favor? Scared? Uh, request, request for encroachment agreement, Mitchell?
Thank you. Um. A little bit of an odd one. So as council may be aware, uh, when we. Started to implement the short term rental poli- uh bylaw and policy, we did update our municipal land use policies to permit. Um, sort of a streamlined um docking agreement. Uh, for property owners who just have a dock located on their shoreline road allowance. And uh, where folks had other structural encroachments, they would need to make an application to purchase. Um, so we've run into a a bit of a unique situation here um with Michael and Kelly Mitchell, who are the property owners at. Ten seventy three Norwalk Road, which is on Clement Lake, just uh north of Wolverforce here. Uh, so when they were making their application, it was noted that they needed an encroachment agreement with the municipality. Um, because they do have a floating dock at the water's edge of Clement Lake, uh, but they also do have a set of stairs. Now, council mayor may not be aware, um, but when the the development on the south side of Clement Lake. Uh, happened, there was a subdivision uh called Register Plan six sixteen. One of the conditions of the subdivision approval was the creation of block seventeen. Which is a strip of municipally owned land located between the front lot line of the lots and the water's edge of Clement Lake. Um, this was designed specifically to protect the lake itself from adverse effects of development. Um, so the agreement doesn't allow um sort of site alteration, doesn't allow sheds that those sorts of structures. Um, and um, however, um, we are not in a position to kind of sell portions of block seventeen to to property owners. Um, because the intent really there is to sort of maintain this shoreline buffer. Um, so the applicants do have a set of stairs down the sea sleep, uh, the steep slope. Uh, to the water's edge. Um, and they have asked if they could enter into kind of one of these streamlined agreements. With the municipality, um, over blocks, the portion of block seventeen in front of their ownership. Uh, to recognize um the location of the stairs in the dock. Um, and what this would do is um, they would pay the encroachment agreement fee and they would. Um, maintain five million dollars in liability insurance, simply because we're not in a position to to dispose of any part of this load a lot, a road allowance to them. Road allowance block seventeen, it functions as a road allowance, but we're not in a position to sell it. Um, so staff are recommending um. That council support a simplified or streamlined agreement with these folks. Uh, to permit the use of the stairs in the dock. Um, the agreement will not permit any other encroachment, so no patios, uh, no, no decks, no sheds, nothing like that. Um, and uh, it will require that uh these folks continue while they're renting their short term rental. To pay the encroachment agreement uh fee year over year. Uh, and provide the municipality with insurance to uh protect our repairs and our municipal corporation. Um, from liability claims stemming from the use of the of the block to access the water. And I'm happy to answer any questions should council have any.
Kim, um, any questions? Resolution?
The council received the report request for encroachment agreement, Mitchell, as prepared by the junior planner for information and further that council directs staff to enter into. A simplified encroachment agreement with Kelly and Michael Mitchell in accordance with. Section twenty seven of the bylaw twenty twenty four dash thirty six, a policy to govern the use of municipal land.
If someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? Carried? Uh, request to proceed with shoreline road allowance purchase lands of Fiddler.
Thank you very uh much, Mayor Burton. Um, so some member of members of council may be familiar with this file. It is a little bit older. Um. So initially, um. Back in twenty twenty, um, the property owners, um, Fiddler at eleven sixty seven South Wolverforce Road made an application to purchase their shoreline road allowance. Uh, the subject property here has um two dwellings, so one of which is. Located on the shore road allowance, um, and has a floor area of little under seven hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, the structure is accessory to the main dwellings, uh, which is not located on the shore road allowance. Uh, there have been a number of additions to this original log cabin on the site, which was understood to have had a floor area of approximately. Um, three hundred and three square feet when it was, when it was first uh placed on.
three hundred and three square feet when it was, when it was first placed on the site. So Mr. Fiddler did write a letter to council and Chris did provide a planning report to council regarding it. And, and the recommendation from Chris at that point was that the disposition of the shoreline road allowance be contingent on the passage of a zoning by law amendment and site plan agreement that require the reduction of this dwelling unit from the sort of as it exists, seven hundred and forty-nine square feet to the original three hundred and three square feet. Then sort of fast forward about a year, Mr. Jones did provide an additional report to council after Mr. Fiddler provided a legal opinion sort of disputing kind of the, the position that council had taken at that time. At that time, council passed another resolution supporting their original position back in twenty twenty. So it was pretty quiet in the intervening three years, but staff were contacted this summer by Steve Edwards, who is a, who's a professional planner employed with GHD, and they were looking to work towards finding a resolution on this. I did meet with Mr. Edwards, Mr. Fiddler and Chris Jones to discuss this longstanding file. And sort of as part of those discussions back and forth, Mr. Fiddler has proposed to remove two portions of the building, which would reduce the total floor area of the structure to about five hundred and ten square feet. Mr. Fiddler also agreed that the building would be recognized as a guest cabin only, not as an additional dwelling unit. In review of the, the revised plans and in the, the discussion, staff do believe that this is a, a pretty reasonable compromise between the parties. And should the applicant comply with the proposed conditions that we, we'd like to see, the end result would be an outcome that's aligned with our official plan policies regarding waterfront design standards and disposition of road allowances. So we recommend that the shoreline disposition would be subject to a site plan agreement, which would include provisions for the partial demolition and downsizing of the guest cabin to that agreed-upon footprint, that they would provide us with insurance coverage for this work on municipal property while they're doing this. And then we would have an implementing zoning by law amendment and satisfactory septic inspection for the system that is located on this shore road allowance. So that's three conditions, basically, site plan agreement that a septic inspector provide an inspection for the septic system and that it be provided to our CBO to his satisfaction and that we receive an application to amend the, the zoning by law to recognize the smaller guest cabin as well as its existing setback from Ted's Lake. So that's the recommendation from staff. We think this is kind of a, a good middle ground to, to get this long-running file tidied up and should hopefully satisfy kind of the municipality's requirements and desire to protect our shorelines with the property owner's desire to maintain a, a structure, which is clearly important to them. And I'm happy to answer any questions, should, should council have any.
Questions? Resolution?
The council received the report request to proceed with shoreline road allowance purchase lands of Fiddler as information. Further, the council directs staff to forward the application to Bishop Rogers DeVries Smith Frank for processing. And the council shall render the shoreline road allowance surplus once the following conditions have been satisfied. One applicant has applied for a site plan agreement under section forty, one of the Planning Act to address exterior design, the maintenance of shoreline vegetation and landscaping. The agreement shall include provisions for the partial demolition of the guest cabin and rehabilitation of the structure to be retained. Two, the applicant has had a qualified septic inspector inspect the existing septic system for the cabin and provided a report on its functionality and suitability of the existing system to serve the guest cabin to be reviewed and cleared by the chief building official. And finally, the applicant has applied for and received an amendment to the zoning by law for the subject property to recognize a single-story forty-seven point seven square meters guest cabin as well as its setback to the high-water mark of Ted's Lake.
If someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kim. Resolutions from other municipalities, levels of government?
The council received and filed the resolution from other municipalities, levels of government from the regular meeting of council of April eighth twenty twenty five.
If someone move? Counselor Strong, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? Carried. Correspondence?
The council receiving files the correspondence of the April eighth twenty twenty five regular meeting of council.
Someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor Strong. All in favor? Carried. Counsel, we're going to leave the regular meeting of council.
The council moves into closed meeting in order to discuss matters pertaining to two, three, nine, two B personnel matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees pertaining to also labor relations or employee negotiations, union matters, public works department, as well as see a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, as well as K position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board pertaining to road allowance for Smith.
If someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Rising report from the closed meeting?
The council rise from the closed meeting and reports the following. Council discussed items to stay within the regular meeting council agenda and directed the staff and officials to carry out all actions as approved in the April eighth twenty twenty five closed meeting of council.
If someone move? Deputy Mayor Ryle, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? Carried. Bylaws, bylaw twenty twenty five dash nineteen.
The bylaw number twenty twenty five dash nineteen being a rezoning bylaw for Fro Lynch at the April eighth twenty twenty five meeting being acted approved and signed with the corporate seal attached.
If someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? Carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty five dash twenty.
Bylaw number twenty twenty five dash twenty being a rezoning bylaw for Blisniak at the April eighth twenty twenty five meeting being acted approved and signed with the corporate seal attached.
If someone move? Counselor Strong, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? Carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty five dash twenty one.
The bylaw number twenty twenty five dash twenty one being a bylaw to authorize the acquisition of land pertaining to grills at the April eighth twenty twenty five meeting being acted approved and signed with the corporate seal attached.
If someone move? Counselor Strong, second by Counselor Lewis. All in favor? Carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty five dash twenty two.
Um, yes, council, and this bylaw is coming forward due to the landfill hours that were changed, so this is just a formality of this bylaw. The bylaw number twenty twenty five being, or twenty twenty five dash twenty two being a bylaw to regulate waste disposition at municipal landfill sites at the April eighth twenty twenty five meeting being acted approved and signed with the corporate seal attached.
If someone move? Counselor Strong, second by Counselor Lewis. All in favor? It's carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty five dash twenty three.
That bylaw number twenty twenty five dash twenty three being a bylaw for, to authorize an agreement for service between the municipality, Highlands East and Firemark at the April eighth twenty twenty five meeting being acted approved and signed with the corporate seal attached.
If someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? Carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty five dash twenty four.
That bylaw number twenty twenty five dash twenty four being a bylaw for to establish the rates of remuneration and expense allowance for members of council at the April eighth twenty twenty five meeting being acted approved and signed with the corporate seal attached.
If someone move? Counselor Strong, Counselor Lewis. All in favor? Carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty five dash twenty five.
The bylaw number twenty twenty five twenty five being a bylaw for to authorize the use of alternative voting methods, internet and telephone for the twenty twenty six municipal school board election at the April eighth twenty twenty five meeting being acted approved and signed with the corporate seal attached.
If someone move? Counselor Strong, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? Carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty five dash twenty six.
Um, yes, council, this is our user fees and charges. It is coming back for amendment, particularly because of the fire mark fees, as well as our disposition of land policy. They weren't in there prior to when we approved it, so that's the reasoning, okay? The bylaw twenty twenty five dash zero seven amended being a bylaw for to establish user fees and charges for services and activities provided by the municipality, Highlands East at the April eighth twenty twenty five meeting being acted approved and signed with the corporate seal attached.
If someone move? Counselor Strong, second by Counselor Lewis. All in favor? Carried. Confirmation by law?
That bylaw number twenty twenty five twenty six being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting of April eighth twenty twenty five being acted approved and signed with the corporate seal attached.
If someone move? Counselor McKenzie, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Adjournment?
That council adjourned the April eighth twenty twenty five meeting at twelve ten PM and to meet again on May thirteenth twenty twenty five at nine thirty AM for the regular meeting of council.
Someone move? Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Lewis. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Thank you, council. Thank you.